I call to order the April 19, 2016 meeting of the Arvada Planning Commission. Ms. Brown, would you please call the roll?
President.
Present.
Here.
Here.
John Sullivan.
Here.
John Kraus.
Here.
Patricia Connell.
Here.
Ed Rothschild.
Here.
The minutes of the April 5, 2016 meeting have been submitted for approval. Are there any additions or corrections to the meeting minutes? Seeing none, the minute stand approved is corrected. We'll move on to general business. There are no general business items on tonight's agenda. Moving on to reports, there are no reports to discuss this evening. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll move on to petitions and communications. This is a time when anyone may address the commission regarding items that are not listed as public hearings on tonight's agenda. The items, the public hearing schedule for tonight's agenda are the Village of Five Parks Village Center, PDP. PDP? Yeah, PDP. Additionally, we would ask that you would hold comments you may have regarding any application which has been filed with the city or which is likely to be filed with the city until the hearing on those items where we will welcome your comments. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the commission regarding anything else? Please come to the podium, state your name, and give us a spelling and your address.
My name is Nancy Young, N-A-N-C-Y-Y-O-U-N-G, as in forever young. You want my address, right?
Please.
7706 Robinson Way here in Arvada. Good evening. I'm here tonight to say thank you to Commissioner Rothschild. I have been an observer of these sessions for several years now and have grown to deeply appreciate his even-handedness, his fairness toward all parties that stand here and make presentations. And I will honestly say, and this is about the highest compliment I can give anyone, you've earned my respect. Thank you.
And we have Mr. Figliolino? Did I get it right?
You're so close. My name is Brandon Figliolino. Super close. F-I-G-L-I-O-L-I-N-O. I live at 7893 Allison Way, Unit 302, here in Arvada. And I also wanted to thank Commissioner Rothschild for all of his hard work on this commission. And I know you won't be on this one anymore, but I am excited that I still get to work with you on the Bike Advisor Committee. So, thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, and I certainly wanted to take a moment to say more or less the same thing. I mean, I think you've been 12 years on the commission now. Certainly, when I came on and I was new on the commission, I looked to you for a lot of examples of, you know, good leadership and good stewardship. And I've appreciated serving with you. Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move on to public hearings. At this time, I would like to explain the procedure for public hearings. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation. After the presentation, I'll ask those in favor of the applicant to speak, and then those in opposition. The applicant will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. After all the testimony has been heard, the public input portion will be closed and questions will be taken from the Planning Commission. I would now like to swear in anyone who wishes to speak in any public hearing tonight on any top, before this commission tonight. Please rise, raise your right hand, and I will swear you all in now. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in matters before this commission are the truth and nothing but the truth? If so, please answer "I do." All right, thank you. You may be seated. So, the hearing on tonight's agenda is the Village of Five Parks Village Center, Village of Five Parks Village Center Second Amendment Preliminary Development Plan. Is there any, are there any just posting or notification requirements?
There were. There's requirements that were taken in the newspaper, which staff took care of, so that did occur. There was also a requirement to post signs on the property and send mailings to surrounding property owners. And we do have the posting log and the mailing affidavit. They are in order, and all posting requirements have been met.
Okay. The staff report, posting log, and the affidavit of mailing are made permanent part of the record. Are there any additions or corrections to the staff report?
Not at this time.
Okay. Is there a representative of the applicant present? Please come to the podium. Same procedure. If you could spell your name, give us your address, and then you may go ahead and start.
All right, good evening. My name is Jamie Miles. That's J-A-I-M-E, Miles, M-I-L-E-S. Just raise that just a touch. The address is 8631 Gladiola Circle in Arvada, Colorado. So, good evening. Thank you for letting us be here tonight to present. We're actually pretty excited to do this all. Trying to keep my tempo down a little bit. My name is Jamie, and this is my wife, Cory. We live here in Arvada. We've been in the Village of Five Parks since 2005. And we've had one house on one side of the street, and then a few years ago moved a house on the other side. Really, really enjoy this neighborhood. And over the last few years, we've been thinking about this particular piece of land and maybe the possibility of helping to be a part of finishing the construction of that neighborhood. This is one of the last remaining pieces to finish building out Five Parks. And about a year ago, we went ahead and started the process of purchasing the land. And what you're going to see here tonight is our presentation on how we'd like to go ahead and finish building out that piece of land. Part of the presentation tonight, I have with me Steve Lane from Sessions Architecture. He's the architect on the project. Karen Henry from the Henry Design Group, who's been shepherding us through the process of the PDP and soon-to-be the FDP process, as well as the landscape stuff that you'll see on the plan this evening. And so, let's just jump into the presentation that we have. As you can see here, this is Village of Five Parks. It's kind of at the northwest end of Arvada, if you're not familiar with it. Surrounding this community center is residential housing. It's just about 800 or so house tops that are inside the neighborhood. And the community was designed to have this center in the middle where there was going to be mixed use. We have a community pool that you can see in the bottom left of this picture. And then up above, there are existing mixed-use buildings that have commercial retail on the first floor and then apartment buildings on the second floor. The site that we're discussing this evening is marked in red, it says "The Site," and that's the .68 acres that we're planning on developing. And the intent for our development is to mimic very similarly what's been done inside of the other mixed-use buildings that are there. You'll see as we go through the designs tonight that we've tried to be very consistent with the architecture. We love it, right? We really enjoy living in this neighborhood. And so, for us, it was really important, and it's kind of a privilege to be a part of trying to maintain the sense of what's already being done in the neighborhood. We're going to put retail commercial on the first floor. We're not going to start any of those businesses. We'll be the landowners, and we'll rent those. But then what we're doing with this building that's a little bit different than the other buildings is instead of multiple dwelling units on the top floor, we're going to just do one residence. And we're going to sell our house, and that's actually going to be where we're going to live. So, we're going to live right here in the middle of the community, which is, for us, is kind of exciting. It's a kind of unique opportunity to do a custom build in Five Parks and to be a part of finishing building the building out. As you can see here, these are the buildings that are already existing. We've marked on the top right, you know, what you're looking at. Maybe the most important one to note is D, because that's the building that's immediately across from the one that we're going to build. And it asks you just kind of hold D in your mind's eye. As we move into some of the architectural slides later on, you'll see that we've mimicked that building in large part. The tower that's a part of our building will sit directly across from the tower that's there, so there'll be symmetry as you come down the line as you're driving down the street. And we've maintained a lot of the similar materials, and you'll see in the material board when we jump to that in a little bit. The other pictures are just some of the other buildings along the way. What's in the Village of Five Parks today is a mix of different uses. There's a couple of restaurants, one that's more of a sit-down restaurant, one that's a pizza restaurant that's more of a takeaway, Marco's. We've got an optometrist. We've got a dental practice that's there. There's a salon. There's a number of just different businesses that are there today that really serve the community in this surrounding area. And so, again, our goal is to add some more space for that type of function inside the Village of Five Parks. We're hoping to probably have three tenants, just kind of designing for maybe one more restaurant. When we did the community meeting, that was by far the biggest comment that we had. People just wanted another restaurant. They loved Jack's that's there now, and they liked the Marco's, and they wanted another one. So, we're trying to honor that request, and you'll see that in the design. It sets up very well for it, the way we put the patio in there, I think will be really cool for that. And then the other two will be retail of some kind. You know, I'd love to continue with the medical theme, so maybe like a chiropractor, some other type of retail. I don't know yet. I don't have those agreed yet, so we're still going to kind of conversation with folks around those. But that's kind of the theme of what we're doing. Here you can see our site plan, so we kind of zoom up here a little bit on top of the building. The building footprint is about 65 by 90. It's a little bit bigger there with the garage that comes out the bottom and part of the stowaway, but the general shape of the rectangle is 65 by 90 footprint. The right side is the existing parking. So, there's parking that's already there today. It's been on that lot for years. But what we're doing with this project is we're adding additional parking to really bring us up to the amount of spaces that we need for the type of usage that we think we're going to put in. And so, you can see here, we're adding additional parking on the south end of the lot, as well as a private garage for the residents. One of the other key things we did here is the existing lot that's there. We've expanded it a little further towards the north. We were able to add in a couple more parking spaces, which is helping with some of the need that we'll need for the overall plan. And then we put in marked handicap spaces, which don't exist today. And then we also went through and made sure that our grading met with all of our IDA compliance rules. I'm going to bring up Karen Henry here, who's from the Henry Design Group, and she's going to help walk us through this slide, as her team is pretty keen helping us put some of this material together.
For the record, my name's Karen Henry with Henry Design Group. Our address is 1501 Wazee Street, Suite 1C, Denver. As Jamie mentioned, we're the planters and landscape architects on this project. I'm going to get into a couple of the nuts and bolts of the site plan. There are a total of 40 parking spaces. There'd be seven on the street and 33 in the lots to the east and the south. The total residential square footage is about 7,233 square feet, and the retail is, oh, boy. 5469, sorry about that. There's connectivity for the walks, for those coming from the depot, coming down the plaza to the east. And we're adding a sidewalk so that you can come through those parking lots and onto the plaza and into the structure. On the north side of the building, there's a large sidewalk with planters to soften it up. And on the west side of the building, there's a nice patio area that will be covered and fenced in for outdoor dining, which we heard a lot of interest in when we did the neighborhood meeting. We're maintaining the open space to the south. We did encroach it a little bit with that parking lot, and we have to replace or relocate four trees, but those are indicated on the plan. As we move into the landscape plan, all the parking areas have been buffered with evergreen trees and shrubs so that there's no impacts from headlights. There's screening and honey locust trees next to the patio for shade, again, screening it from the plaza or the walkway to the depot. And like I said, all the parking areas have been screened from the adjacent uses. I think that's about it. One of the cool things on Jamie's building, which he's going to have a nice rooftop plaza to overlook all this, which I think is really cool, so I bring that up.
Yeah, that's cool. Thank you. So, we come to this context plan slide that we have here. And this, again, just kind of shows us that high level. But what we're indicating with this particular diagram is, you know, from a bird's-eye view, what the finished product is going to be. So, you see here that we finished out the parking and the building and what the footprint looks like, and really how it fits into the overall design of the community. I would comment that there was a previous PDP for this piece of land that also fit into this really well, and we actually ended up keeping a lot of the artistic design of that in what we've presented here tonight. So, if you'd seen the previous plan, I think you probably recognize that as well. All right, so if we jump into our architecture pictures here, again, we try to keep with the theme of what's already going there, the brick facades around. And I'm going to invite Steve Lane to come up and maybe just present a couple of points on some of the things that we've done here. But in general, what you'll see here with these pictures that we're going to show you here in a second is that we've tried to mimic very closely a lot of the look and feel of the buildings. There's a few things that we've changed in terms of this, like the backside here, you'll see the straight row of windows. There's a few things artistically we've taken into play. But a lot of that was because we knew that this building really needed to be a four-sided building. There isn't really a back to this building, because what you would think of the back, that's the amphitheater. So, people are there watching concerts, and we wanted to make sure that looked really good. And when you're on the west side, well, you're walking down the depot. That's right in the main thoroughfare for our neighborhood. And on the east side, that's where the parking is. And then the front, you know, I mean, the north side, everybody's driving by that every day. So, what you'll hopefully see here, what I sure hope we're showing here today, is that we've done a lot of work to make sure that the building really presents well from all four sides. Steve, anything else you want to add on to some of these things while we're going through this?
Sure. Okay, come on.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Steve Lane, L-A-N-E. My company is called Sessions, that's S-E-S-S-I-O-N-S. I live at 2465 Stewart Court in Denver, 80212. Really glad that you're here to entertain our, you know, our project here and really appreciate your considerations. On this particular piece, what was really fun was working with Jamie and Cory Miles and knowing from the get-go that really this building had to respect the surroundings. Here we are with all these other buildings across the street, and they took on this flavor. And I just felt that it was very important. You know, architects can go all across the boards when we get into our designs. It was very important to maintain the character of the buildings across the street. And I think we've done that quite successfully. We're using kind of the rose-colored brick, so to speak. And it's a brick that matches a portion of the buildings across the street, because quite frankly, they have about four different colors of brick. And the one that we've chosen, and we have the materials board here, we think is very consistent. There won't be any color changes and movement on the building, so we think that's important. Number two, we have these precast inserts. They're the little, what looks like white squares. Well, those actually exist on the existing buildings, and they're done out of precast, and they're let into the brick. And they just add a really nice character. I thought, you know, okay, we're going to bring those in, you know, so that you tie in detail to what you already have. Tying in detail is really important. The base of the building, we're using the same base, which is basically kind of a precast concrete masonry, so to speak. And we're copying that detail, very important, so that from the base of the building, starting on up about three feet and then on up, it's basically mimicking the buildings across the street, which we think is really important. So, you'll really get consistency. We have storefront, which is aluminum storefront on the ground floor, which is what we have on the commercial level on all the other buildings. We have a dark panel below that, which mimics the dark panels that are on the existing buildings. So, you're really getting a good tie-in there, and we think that's very important. Where things start being a little different maybe is when you get up on the residential floor, which is essentially the second floor. The windows on the front of the building kind of mimic what's going on already across the street. And that was a little difficult to do, because we have bedrooms and things like that. On the corner, it's a little bit different. What you're looking at is two stories of glass with a spiral stair that'll read through there when you come into the project. That belongs to the owner. It'll actually be pretty spectacular when it's lit up at night. I've got some other things happening there, some decorative metal art pieces and things like that, that we think just add to the signature of this particular building and a reflection of the owner's personalities about what they want to do. And, but all the rest of it, we have black awnings, some, you know, the canvas, the sun umbrella awnings that match what's on the existing buildings, although they have some colors. So, anyway, overall, we think this building is a great tie. It's a great fit, and we think it's going to be an addition to the neighborhood. So, that's pretty much it. Were there any questions? I'd love to field them if you have any.
We'll do those in a minute, darling. John, we have those in a minute.
Yeah, so later on, we'll open it to questions from the commission.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. So, here you can see the north and the south, and these are the east and the west elevations. I know you have the material in front of you, so you can look at a bit more details you like. But as Steve said, we try to maintain a lot of the ethos of what's happening in the neighborhood. There's a few things that we did that we think had a bit of personality to the building that we've done with some of the metal artwork, the decorative artwork that we've done. And certainly, in terms of my formal presentation, this is where I'm going to pause, just maybe to remind again that this is, we're pretty excited about this project. So, we look forward to your comments. Certainly want to continue to work with City of Arvada on this project. I mean, the staff team that we've worked with so far has been great. I've been pretty impressed with the, not only the amount of detail they put into it, but also just their enthusiasm for the project as well. So, appreciate that. Appreciate you guys hearing our comments tonight.
Thank you. I will now open the hearing for comments from the public. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody who would like to speak against the application?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and were you able to swear in earlier, or do I need to swear you in now? Okay, that's all. Again, just state your name and spell it for us, and give us your address for the record.
John Miller, J-O-H-N, M-I-L-L-E-R, 32063 Coal Creek Canyon, Golden, Colorado. I am an owner of a business over at the Village of Five Parks, and also I'm an owner member of Arvada Five Parks Partners. We own the existing four buildings that Jamie was talking about, where he's trying to mimic his building to our buildings. And also, we're in the process of, Linda's going to be happy to hear this, but getting our financing together to build our final building. So, with these two buildings going up, the puzzle will finally be finished. It's been a long journey since we bought the project from John Osborne's group, Village Homes. And it's taken a long time to get to where we're at now. We've had some recessions. We've had a little bit of flooding over there. You name it, it's happened. But I'm very, very excited to see this finally finished. You can see in his project, he's added a little bit more parking. Our final building, we've also added a little bit of parking. One thing that I want to say is, the original center was designed more as a pedestrian area. And what we found after owning the four buildings, and I've talked to Jamie about it, is the need for a little bit more parking. But we're also cautious not to turn it into a giant parking lot, because we don't want too many cars in and out of there. So, I think with the number of spots he's adding and the number of spots we're going to add in our final building, it's going to give us just enough, but it's not going to turn it into a thoroughfare with too many cars in and out of there. So, I'm happy that that's going to all come together. And finally, Jamie and I have sat down in my restaurant and talked several times about uses over there. And we're both very aware that we can't compete against each other. We need to help each other to make his building work and my four and finally five buildings to work. So, we're going to work together to get the right type of tenants in there. We're not going to get the tenants that'll be there for a few months, and then they're gone. We're going to work very hard to complement each other in our projects. The medical theme, I think it's fantastic. I get phone calls, you know, once a week, people needing space over there in the medical type field. So, again, I think it's going to be perfect. You see the vet over there, the dentist, the eye doc. Obviously, my restaurant and the other small businesses over there is so complimentary to the neighborhood. And I think this project and my project is a great asset to the Village of Five Parks, and it just makes Arvada, you know, that much, you know, maybe a step in front of some of the other communities around us that we have this type of setting, where the people in the neighborhood have exactly what they want, and they can walk to it. So, I want to congratulate Jamie on a fantastic project he's got going on, and I'm very excited to see this finished. And thanks for your time.
Thank you. I guess we'll put that in the supportive column. Is there anybody who would like to speak against the, anybody else in the public who'd like to speak against the project? All right. So, this time, I will close the public input portion of the hearing and open it to questions from the Planning Commission. Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that I think the owner-occupied aspect of this is really interesting, and I think it's a great complement to what's already there. So, I'll certainly support the motion tonight once it comes.
Mr. Rothschild.
Very minor question. I see the bike rack shown in the specs, but I don't see him laid out on the plan. And I'm assuming you will have... Not working? There we go. So, I just wanted to verify that you'll have bicycle parking.
Yeah.
Kind of northeast corner of the site.
As you come into the parking, you'll see him on the corner.
Is there any further, any further questions or comments from the Planning Commission? Seeing none, is there a motion? Mr. Rothschild.
Mr. Chair, I move that PDP 2015 to 0013 Village of Five Parks Village Center Second Amendment Preliminary Development Plan at 13730 West 88th, excuse me, 85th Drive be recommended to City Council for approval, subject to the conditions stated in the staff report, items 1 through 3 on pages 10 and 11. This motion's based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on pages 8, 9, and 10 of the staff report.
Is there discussion on the motion, yeah? Mr. Roth? No? Ms. Caswell?
Just want to say thank you for bringing such a great project before us, and we wish you all the success with it.
Ms. Connell.
I would just add that it appears that there was a lot of work placed into it, and you're really enthused about it. And to have someone who is already in the Five Parks area recommend something like this, it does say a lot for your project.
Ms. Rothschild.
Just before I cast my final vote on the Planning Commission, I wanted to thank my fellow commissioners and thanks staff very much for your support over the years, and to the public. Thank you, Nancy. It was very nice. This is a good note to leave on. Very nice development. It's fascinating, one of the most interesting thing about being on the commission is seeing the changes over the 12 years and seeing this property several times, seeing the development of Five Parks. So, I'll miss it, and I'll miss everybody involved. Thank you.
Commissioners, please cast your, oh, I'm sorry, wait. Please cast your votes. That was fast. And that passes, what is it, 7 to 0. All commissioners voting in favor. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. I mean, there's not much that I can add to the comments that were already, I mean, clearly this is a well-thought-out project, so, and it's pretty interesting that neighboring businesses are supporting each other. That's great to see as well. So, continue to work with staff, as I'm sure you know, and they'll get you to council and get you through the rest of the process. Thank you. All right. All right, so staff, moving on to other items. Are there any other items to consider this evening?
Yes, we will need a motion to cancel the May 3 meeting, as we don't have any cases scheduled for that evening.
Mr. Kraus.
I move that the May 3 meeting of the Arvada Planning Commission be canceled.
Is there any discussion of the motion? Commissioners, cast your votes. I see. You thought it was your last vote, but it's not. That also passes 7-0. All commissioners voting in favor.
And with that, we will then have, the next meeting will be May 17, and enjoy the little breather there, because we have a full agenda that, that evening of the 17th, we will be discussing the Moon Gulch substation at Candellas, McKinley Farms Development on West 51st Avenue, and Land Development Code Amendment related to the wireless communication facilities.
Okay. All righty, and thanks again, Mr. Rothschild. It's like, can't close a meeting without, I can't say enough anyway, so, can't close a meeting without saying something. With that, we are adjourned. With that, we are adjourned.